Where are we getting feedback? I'm not logged into anything.
I have so many people get school for Thanksgiving, so I have to go up there.
How's everyone?
Good.
How was Athens? Yeah, you're in the football game?
Oh, I missed that.
Six hundred dollars.
Whoa.
It was good to be there. It was a good summer.
Got it? Cool. Why is this not working? So are we ready to roll? The clock on the wall says five o'clock, so it must be four o'clock. All right, so we will call to order the November 7th, 2022 Charlottesville City Council meeting. Come to order, please. Ms. Thomas, will you call the roll?
Counselor Payne?
Here.
Counselor Pinkston?
Here.
Mayor Snook?
Here.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Here.
And then?
Counselor McGill. Do you want to go ahead?
And then, so what's the protocol here?
I have it.
Okay.
Counselor McGill sent notice to City Council and the Clerk today requesting to participate virtually due to a medical condition that prevents her from attending in person. She will be participating from her home in Charlottesville. Is there a motion to approve Counselor McGill's remote participation due to a medical condition?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, we deserve a simple roll, a simple voice vote. Say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Is there a second? Where did that? I'm sorry. Any opposed? I'll get through this. Any opposed? Motion passes four to nothing. Happy to have you join us, Counselor McGill. So this meeting, as always, will be divided into three main sections. The first is a work session to hear and discuss presentations that do not require a council vote. Then there will be a closed meeting, usually around 5:30. Then the City Council Business Meeting, which will begin around 6:30 with seating available in council chambers for up to 23 pre-registered attendees and media, and others are able to join electronically by Zoom. So the first item on our agenda for reports this afternoon is from the Botanical Garden of the Piedmont. Are you ready to go?
I am ready to go, but I can't tell if you have my presentation up on your screen or not.
I don't see it up on our screen at this point. What do we need to make that happen?
It was sent to the Clerk's office last Wednesday, so you should have it. Otherwise, I can put it on my screen if I can share the screen.
I'll leave that to the Zoom experts.
Yes, you are now permitted to share your screen.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And just for the record, you are Jill Trishman Marks, Executive Director of the Botanical Garden. Is that correct?
That is correct. Thank you very much for the introduction. And thank you so much, Mayor Snook, for inviting us here today. And thanks also to Vice Mayor Wade, who has continuously been guiding us in our efforts to build a garden to serve the entire community. Members of my Board of Directors will be joining in a little while. I know for a fact that both our President, Kanzi Palmer, and our Vice President, Diego Anderson, should be joining us at any moment. The last time that I came before the City Council, which was in October of 2022, you all unanimously approved a land lease with our organization. And we truly appreciate this opportunity to present you with information about what's been happening at the garden ever since. So this is the mission for the Botanical Garden that has not changed, to invite all community members and visitors to engage in nature, to educate and inspire through the beauty and the importance of plants, to advance sustainability and promote human and environmental well-being. And below that is our vision and our inclusion statement for the garden. And one line I really like is the bottom line of our inclusion statement, which is, "In nature and in society, diversity matters, and we welcome and celebrate it." The Botanical Garden, for those of you who haven't been there, is located on the north end of the east side of McIntyre Park. It's easily accessible through the John Warner Parkway, either by car or the trails and walking paths along the Parkway. It's also very easy for students from Charlottesville High School, who are right next door, to walk over to the garden. We have been investigating the possibility of getting public transportation to the garden through Charlottesville area transit service as well as through Jaunt. And that's a work in progress, but we hope to be able to report that we're working towards a bus stop sometime in the near future. But the land lease almost doubled the size of the Botanical Garden. As you can see, the blue line indicates the eight and a half acres of the Botanical Garden with our MOA agreement. And then the red line indicates the 14.74 acres that we grew to as a part of this agreement. As a result, we needed to update our schematic plan. As you know, it was designed with community feedback, and so we did our best to make sure that we kept as much of that garden intact. The changes that we incorporated were specifically to include the changes that are being made to the stream during the stream restoration process. The addition of the trails and the bridge that will be going over the stream, which is the final leg of the Ravanna Parkway, I'm sorry, the Ravanna Trail that will link the garden to the rest of the community. What it impacted the most was our children's garden. It actually almost doubled the size of the children's garden. And since we did the original schematic plan, we have also been offering free children programming. And so we were able to add a lot of the feedback that we've gotten as a part of this programming into the schematic plan. So the Children's Discovery Garden now includes a reading nook and raised planting beds and other areas for our programming, as well as still the areas for free play and discovery and exploration. The other change to the garden was our parking area. It had been designed with a separate drop-off area, and it took up a lot more area of the Botanical Garden site. What we did was we incorporated the drop-off area into the parking itself, and then we put an internal rain garden, which will draw all of the surface water from the paved surfaces, filter it, and then go under the parking area to create a series of waterfalls, which will be areas for fun and exploration, but also the sound of the water will help to mitigate some of the traffic noises that you experience now when you're on the site. So as I said, the area, other areas of the garden are still intact. We have our visitor center, which is, will house our meeting rooms and offices and library, gift shop, catering facilities, and maybe a small cafe. And adjacent to that, we have a three-season event space. Currently, we have no amenities at the site, and we've had to cancel a lot of our programs because of the rain, especially in the spring and early summer. So we're looking forward to being able to offer programming and not have to cancel it because of the weather. And adjacent to the architecture for the, in the garden, we'll have our amphitheater for seasonal celebrations, classes, and performances, as well as our main event green. As you all know, as part of the land lease agreement, we will not be charging admission. So having events like this in the garden, as well as being able to rent out our facilities, is how we're going to be sustaining the garden financially. We'll also have healing and meditation gardens, our tree canopy walk up on the other side of the stream with a bird line for watching birds feed and nest, as well as a sky viewing platform. We'll have flowering meadows, fern, mushroom, and moss gardens, a pineedum, which is a collection of native conifers, flowering groves, and other garden spaces. So we're really excited about the plans for the future garden. In the meantime, we have been stewarding the site since 2019. You all might remember this as the former leaf dump and mulch pile for the city of Charlottesville. And the photograph you're looking at now is the actual photograph of the site on the first day that we started cleaning it up. We have a tremendously healthy seed bed of invasive plants. And we got a grant to hire a forestry mulcher in order to be able to penetrate into the invasive vines, just to get in to start cleaning up the site. And we've been very fortunate with the help of our community partners, grants, and our volunteers. We've created trails and gathering areas, which allowed us to start offering free public programming. Things like walks for the identification of trees, butterflies, birds, and native plants. But in addition, in the past year, we also got three grants, and we've been offering free public programming to children in the arts, literacy, and stream water testing, or STEM. We've also been reaching out to the other groups in the community and offering our gathering spaces to them, so that they have been able to offer their programming in the garden as well, for free. And none of this would be possible without the help of our volunteers. We have over 470 registered volunteers. Our volunteers actually doubled during the pandemic. In addition, we have workdays that are sponsored by groups that are outside of the garden. For example, in September, the United Way Day of Caring, we had groups from State Farm, UVA Library, and Arcwise Wealth, who came into the garden and spent their mornings helping us to clean up the garden and build amenities for the community to use. All of the improvements that we're doing to the garden right now are low to no cost. For example, in the upper left-hand side of the screen, our meadow garden. That's been a great success for people driving by on the John Parkway, just to be able to see the colors. But it's also been a great learning tool, because all of the plants provide habitat for pollinators. We have a children's lending library for books about gardens and nature that was donated to us by a local book club. We've had a couple of Eagle Scout projects that were donated to the garden this summer. In the top center, we have a chalkboard that we're using for children's programming. We also have an accessible picnic chair table, as well as benches with arms for the community to use. And then the amphitheater that you see was one of the elements that, with materials that were donated to the garden that was built on our Day of Caring. Now we're starting to steward the side of the garden that's south of the stream. The area you see in red was just, with the help of a grant that we got, we hired a forestry vulture to come back to the garden, and we started removing more invasive plants on that side of the garden. And here we have some before and after photographs of the work that was done in just two days. Next, we'll be working on creating trails and gathering areas on the south side of the stream, so that it's easier for people that are accessing it from the skate park to be able to use that area of the stream. The other thing that we're looking forward to is the stream restoration that's about to begin, which will follow closely with the bridge construction, and will connect the garden to the entire Ravanna Trail. We are growing our programs, writing grants to incorporate ages beyond what we're offering now, and we're really excited about the possibility. The idea for how we're expanding our programming comes from feedback from members of the community and other organizations that we're partnering with. And we're looking forward to getting more groups to the site, so they can learn all about what the garden has to offer to them. So the question is, how are we growing the garden? I know you're all interested in costs. We had a cost estimate that was done in 2018 as a part of the original cost estimate. We added a certain percentage to that, to that cost based on the time that's gone by. And then we added funds, because we know that since the pandemic, the cost for building has gone way up. We started a year ago, our first capital campaign. We're in the silent phase, and it's for, to raise $10 million. And I'm happy to say that in one year, we are a third of the way of raising the funds for the first phase of construction. And the first elements that we planned to build are our three-season garden pavilion, the Children's Discovery Garden, and a small parking lot. We, in fact, just got a grant from the Perry Foundation that will help us towards building the garden pavilion, so we're really excited about how quickly community support is helping us to fund this first phase of the garden. Our plans, if we are to meet our goals, is to have the first phase built in three to five years. So how is the city benefiting from the Botanical Garden? Environmentally, the garden is already starting to strengthen the local ecosystem. We've seen a great diversity of birds enter the site since we started removing invasive plants. With this diversity of plants, we're also helping to curb pollution. Economically, we know that botanical gardens attract tourism and contribute to the commerce of their local region. Socially, we will attract, we will support the fabric of our greater community as an education center and as a new social hub that is public, open air, and free. But most significantly, research indicates that physical and mental health outcomes are improved for city dwellers of all ages who have regular access to natural environments, so that public gardens, like the Botanical Garden of the Piedmont, play an active role, an important role, in sustainable community development. So on your screen now is our website, and I invite you to go to it and check it out and see the other information it has to provide. I also have my contact information up here. I would love to give you guys a tour, so that you can see for yourself all the improvements that have happened to the garden. And I will stop here and see if there are any questions.
Counselors, have any questions?
No, that was a very thorough presentation. I really appreciated the update. Thank you.
I don't have any questions. I just have some comments. And, you know, I've been seeing the signs there for years, Jill, and, you know, we've taken tours of it several times, and one of the things that I found, you know, exciting about this space is that, you know, for years, I just thought it was the plot of land behind the high school and by the railroad track, and you've made into, you know, yes, yes, that's where the leaf where it get mulched at the end. But you made it a place for, you can just go for solace and just kind of relax and, and for peace. It's a place of beauty, if you wanted that. It's a place to, just to explore. I remember when I was, one of the times I was, you know, taking a walk there, is that, you know, someone pointed out, you know, a really, you know, rare tree that, you know, was, you know, spotted in there, and that it was saved, and it's a place where, you know, we can now teach it to and talk with other kids about it, you know, in the system. So I really see once this up and going, that it could be, you know, an economic driver, that people would come here. I'm thinking of when my undergraduate, that the Norfolk Botanical Garden in Richmond, of course, Louis Ginter Park, Louis Ginter has one, to Wonderful Park Botanical Garden. But we, I think one here would be just really, just something that would draw people from central Virginia to the Charlottesville area and, you know, to, you know, and hopefully they'll stick around and, you know, shop and eat and maybe even stay overtime overnight or something else to do. So I'm just glad that you and your board are able to do the work that you're doing. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, likewise, I don't really have anything substantive to add or questions, but like others said, I had a chance a while ago to tour the place, and it's really incredible, just the small size of it, going through it, you know, when you walk through it and look at everything that you all have planned, it's just really incredible that that much is being fit in there. And especially with the planned pavilion and like the future programming for students as it continues to get closer to completion. I agree. I mean, I feel like this is really going to be something that is really like foundational, and a lot of people think of when they think of Charlottesville. And I just think it's a really great kind of, what visionary planning looks like and the power of kind of intentional public spaces. So appreciate the report and just really exciting to see.
Counselor McGill, any comments, questions? Nope, okay. I would just like to say, one of the things that I most appreciate, at the risk of sounding like a bean counter, is the fact that you're raising your own money. One of the things that I would really like to encourage nonprofits in this area to figure out how they can raise their own funds instead of coming to the city every time they need another $100,000, $500,000, whatever. We have a huge number of nonprofits in Charlottesville. We have a lot of them doing excellent work. And unfortunately, they, in my experience, an awful lot of them tend to figure that Charlottesville, the city government is the funder, at least of first resort, rather than perhaps of last resort. So I just appreciate the fact that you all have clearly gone out and we, granted, we basically gave you the land on which to do it, but all of the reforming of that land and all of the work that you've been doing is, has been yours and not ours, and that's just wonderful.
Just one quick additional comment was that it was a perception that this was going to be not necessarily for everyone in the community, but Jill and the leadership and the board really have been very intentional to say that this space is for everyone and have really gone above and beyond, I believe, in trying to get out the word to different groups that this is an open space. And I know a lot of nonprofits, this is what they had their meetings during COVID, when it was really hard to meet in a building, but they wanted to see each other and be in the same space with one another. And this was one of the places that you could do it outside. And so I think that once it's done, I think a lot of people will continue to take advantage of that. So thank you.
Comments, questions? Rebuttal?
I hope not.
Okay, well, thank you so much. And we, I just can't tell you how much I appreciate the fact that you all are doing what you're doing. I drive by there just about every day on my way into the office, and occasionally I've stopped in and walked around when there was nobody else there. And it's just, it's just a nice place to get lost a little bit. Not physically lost, perhaps, but psychically lost. So thank you very much.
Again, the invitation for a tour of the garden stands, and I'm excited to show you what we're doing on the south side of the stream as well. So please do reach out if you have any questions or if you would like a private tour of the garden. I would love to also invite other organizations, if they haven't been to the garden for tours, that you, you know, if you have suggestions about who should come, please do reach out and let me know. I would love to give them tours as well and let them know the space is available to them.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next item on our four o'clock agenda is a presentation by the city attorney reporting on vacating rights of way. Ms. Robertson?
Good afternoon. Lisa Robertson, City Attorney. This presentation will not be as much fun or as happy-feely as the Botanical Garden presentation, but here I am. David Dillahun has some talking points that he's agreed to put on the screen at some point here. There we go. Thank you, David. I don't have a PowerPoint or anything, but I thought you might like to sort of have a look at some of the talking points. So as I understand it, one of the things you were all interested in having a presentation about was to understand what's been happening inside City Hall and why some people who want to close a street or an alley, or even to vacate certain utility easements, are able to be successful, and at other times, people are not successful. And you've heard anecdotes, including from Counselor McGill, where people express frustration at not having been given very good information about where to file an application, who can file an application, why they might have been told their application couldn't move forward, various reports of- various, various reports of people who don't understand why their application can't go forward when some others have gone forward. One thing that I did to get prepared for this discussion or this report was I tried to find various versions of a street closing policy that, that the city has used in, say, the last 10 years. So the current version of procedures for considering these types of applications is, was approved in 2019. Prior to that, the last procedure that I found was approved by city council on, in February of 2005. I could not find a policy prior to that. But in 2000, in December of 2004, when the 2005 policy was presented to city council, the then-city manager stated that the last time cities' procedures had been considered or reviewed, early 1990s. I've not, at this time, been able to locate the policy from the early 1990s if it was written. But simply reviewing the 2005 and the, the current policies, I have not found a reason, a policy-based reason why different people might have been told, "We can't accept your application at all," or "We can't go forward," with one exception. So in 2019, at the request of city council, there was a task force, or I'm not sure if task force was the proper terminology, but city council asked a group of people to get together and to look at all the paper alleys in the city to determine whether or not there might be opportunities for pedestrian connectivity, bicycle, bicycle and pedestrian activity, that sort of thing. And so the, the committee spent quite a bit of time reviewing subdivision, old subdivision plats and the city's tax map, tax maps through the years. And that committee came up with what they called a scoring rubric. And once an application is presented, the current policy, which took effect again in 2019, states that if, if you can tell from the application that a certain critical mass of points can be assigned to, to a particular street or alley, then staff is supposed to tell the applicant automatically, "If you have X number of points, your application cannot go forward because we want to make sure in the future that any opportunities for public projects might be available." So I'm not, I'm not, we can talk at the end of my presentation, and I'm sure Counselor McGill may have some questions. But depending on the timing of when a request came forward, if it came after a certain point in 2019, if there were a certain number of points assigned to that particular location, then staff was empowered by the current policy to just administratively say to a person, "Your application can't go anywhere. We're not even going to send it to city council for consideration."
Can I ask a quick question? Do you know if we're actually following that policy now? Is it honored in the breach? Are we actually doing that?
I, I think, I'm not sure about that. And I think that the, the rubric really works better for some applications than others. And so for an alley, it might work well. For something that was platted as a public street, it might not work well. But I'm not sure if it's being done consistently with all, throughout all the current applications. But let me, what I want to talk a little bit about that's in the, the talking points that are up on the screen at the current point is the reason why it is so difficult to achieve consistency among all applications. So basically, there are three main types of real estate, what I'll call holdings, that frequently the city council is asked to consider vacating. So the first one is the vacation of a city street. It might be a city street that was platted years ago in a particular location, and it's never been developed or improved. And now somebody thinks that the street could be laid out in that section of the subdivision differently. And so they'd like to vacate, vacate the portion of the subdivision plat that shows that street. Then there are improved public streets, which, you know, have, have been paved and constructed, and the city has accepted those into the city's street system. Two categories of public streets. Clearly, if the city is operating and maintaining a public street, the city, when it chooses to do so, can not only vacate that, that street, but can make a decision about when and under what circumstances it might want to sell that whole area to a third party. And the situation that most of you are at least vaguely familiar with was the Brandon Avenue Street Vacation, where UVA acquired the property from the city. But one thing, then the second category of real estate holdings are alleys. So whereas almost all of platted streets within the city, regardless of how old they are, are, were platted in one way or another to be public streets. That's, that's not necessarily all of them. There's variations of that as well. But almost all of them were originally created specifically to be public streets. Very different situation with alleys. In Charlottesville, it is rare to run across an alley that at, at the time it was originally created, was clearly intended to be developed and then turned over to the city for operation and maintenance. So whereas I'll say that 99% of streets that get platted were intended to be public streets, I would say that in Charlottesville, about 99% of the alleys that were platted from the 1800s through even the present time, were not intended to be public. They were private alleys. And so, again, there's always exceptions to everything. And there are some locations where
You got that shit to tell us?
A right-of-way area.
We're going to Jefferson School?
I think that's Sam. Sam, you gotta turn your audio off. There are some locations where there might be a, a platted area. It might look like an alley. Maybe it was intended to be some other sort of right-of-way. But the city may have decided to sort of use it for utilities or something else. So in that situation, that may be an indication that it was originally created or intended to be a public. But for both streets and alleys, the, the legal rule is that you have to look at any plats or deeds that were recorded at the time the area was created. And you have to be able to see within the four corners of that deed or the four corners of the plat, you have to be able to see a clear indication of an intent for that area to be dedicated for public use. And if you can't come up with that intent, either by express words or by some sort of inferences that can be drawn about how something's laid out, how wide it is, what it, whether it connects one thing to another. If you can't find that intent evident on the face of the documents, then the city's not going to have an interest in it. And then the third category of, of real estate holdings are public utility easements. And these are generally limited to water, sewer, and stormwater throughout the Commonwealth. But the city also owns a, a gas utility. So we may also, on occasion, acquire some, some easements. Usually, utility easements are very specifically created during the development process. So you will have utility plats either, or utility easements shown either on a subdivision plat that's presented as part of a development proposal. Or if, if there's no subdivision of land per se, you might have easement plats given to the city in connection with a site plan approval. So we have three different real estate interests. And one question that comes up frequently when an application comes forward is, are we going to make somebody pay money to the city in return for the city council agreeing to, to vacate the area? So the, the question that then comes to mind is whether or not, what's the level of the city's interest in that area? So clearly, if it's an already improved street that the city has been maintaining, the city is the owner of it and controls the operation of it. So if the city wants to consider conveying all of its rights and interests in that area to somebody else, the city is allowed, and there's a specific state statute that authorizes this, the city's allowed to consider charging, you know, to sell it for compensation to somebody in return for conveying title. And title can be to the person acquiring the property, since the city owns basically the whole bundle of sticks that are the interest in that area. The city can sell it to whoever the city wants to. Doesn't, you don't have this issue of title necessarily to the center line. But there are other areas, particularly all of the alleys that frequently come up, where there's no clear indication that the city has any documented public interest in the area. So maybe it's an alley that was created in the early 1900s. And by all indications, that alley was to allow the lot owners themselves access to the rear of their lots or to get trash pickup in and out or to, for, for some other reason. But to give you some indication of, in the grand scheme of things, how many alleys the city actually operates, the, the last time we took an inventory, the city only maintains six alleys. And there are hundreds of alleys throughout the city. So only six of them can we document that there's a public interest in. So when you have an alley, you have to ask a person who's bringing forward an application to give you a lot of information. You need to ask them to bring you the deed book references. You have to collect some information about when it was created, how it's been used, what's going on. And then you have to figure out whether or not it fits in a category that will allow city council to be involved in closing it. So David, would you mind going to the next page, please? So on this, this, on this page, there are also three different procedures that are created under state law that allow a particular area to be vacated. So the first one is the vacation of a particular street or alley as part of a process whereby a subdivision plat that created those areas is actually being vacated. So basically, someone is coming in and asking the, the different property lines within a certain area of a subdivision plat to be vacated and basically erased so they can replat it and, and do things differently. So that's one process. That's in Virginia Code 15.22272, which is under the enabling statutes that talk about how development, developments can be approved and how subdivision plats, either entirely or in part, can be vacated on occasion to allow somebody to do something different. But in, a complicating factor is that this modern subdivision law didn't come into effect until about the, the mid 1940s. So, but when you have an area, whether it's a street or alley, that falls within this subdivision plat authority, it, it may be fine for somebody who is an adjacent property owner along an alley to say, "Hey, we'd like to erase this alley. It's not serving any good purpose. We just, it doesn't need to be there. None of us use it for access to our lots." And the city really doesn't, you know, have any documentation that suggests it has a present right-of-way or right to claim that area for, for public uses. So those adjacent property owners can get together and come petition the city and ask you to close the alley. And basically, when, when that's sort of code for, "We want to erase it" from the plat that created our subdivision. When you do that, that is one of the situations in which title vests with the adjoining landowners to the center line. And that is by operation of law under the state code. There's another provision that, in the state code, that addresses the vacation of streets that were originally created and conveyed to the city as a condition of a site plan approval. And there's a process that applies to that. And one of the main things that you should know is that particular process doesn't apply to alleys because there isn't a place within the city's zoning or subdivision ordinances where dedication of alleys for public uses is required. And as I said, historically, most alleys haven't been documented as, as being within the purview of that section. So rarely is that code section going to be able to be used as the process for vacating a particular alley. But sometimes it'll be available to someone who wants to close a platted street. And then the third is a catch-all category, which is a street vacation process that, that can be applied. It's, it's a process that's available to, in addition to anything else. So if you don't fall into one of the other categories, you might fall into this category. But you can't use that process for an alley when there's no, or even a street, if there's no evidence that the area was dedicated for public use and there's no utilities located in it. So again, what I'm trying to explain is that legally and process-wise, when, when someone presents the city with a request to close a particular area, there are all sorts of variations and, and fact-specific circumstances that are going to determine which process they can use, whether or not the city has an interest in the area, and what factors the city council might want to use to consider whether to proceed on, on that application. One thing I'll note that is in the 2005 policy that isn't necessarily as prominent in the 2019 policy is that there was a list of the factors that city council would consider when considering applications, even if those applications didn't necessarily involve property in which the city itself has an interest. So even when a group of landowners present the city with a request, there are some situations where perhaps not all adjoining landowners are, are agreeing to that this is a good idea. So the city council might need to evaluate whether or not it wants to approve a request to vacate a portion of a subdivision plat if all of the adjoining owners don't agree. And so what were identified in the 2005 policy that should be considered are, is the subject area part of a street that's shown as a feature on your comprehensive plan? Does the city have any current plans to use the subject area for a public street, a sidewalk, or a biking trail or a hiking trail? That would be indicated within some sort of master plan, within the list of projects on your, that are funded within your CIP. But you would look to see if there's any immediate plans to use it. Even if the city doesn't have a current interest in it, if you, if you have a if you, if you have a, and a project that is, is planned to begin shortly, it may well be that you just simply haven't completed the right-of-way acquisition, acquisition phase where you, you would seek to acquire property that, even if you don't have a current interest in it. You would look at whether vacating the area would landblock any particular parcel. You would look at whether, if the particular alley or the platted street, if that area was closed, how, what, how, how much in the way of additional development rights would the adjoining landowners acquire? And is there another adjoining landowner who doesn't want that to occur? So there are all sorts of variations. So what I will tell you at this point is that it sounds to me as if some of the issue, some of the reasons that people have been frustrated is that information about whatever the policy has been at the time they have come in to try and present an application, it sounds as if there hasn't been clear communication, or perhaps those people didn't find their way to someone who was familiar with whatever the current policy is. So there is a need to set up clear lines of communication, such as when an application comes in, how does it enter the city? Where does it go after it enters the city? And one thing that the Office of Community Solutions is working on is identifying whether or not the 2019 policy now gives you enough information about how the application is going to be handled when it comes in the door, what sort of analysis is going to take place before it gets to you? And then, once it gets to you, what are the factors that you're allowed to consider or that you may want to consider, depending on whether or not the city can demonstrate a present title or right to use that property? So I can't promise you that, that these applications are going to get easier to, to sort through because there's so many variables to them. But the processes that we, we put people in, depending on what type of area they're trying to close, we should be able to do a better job articulating to people coming in and asking questions, which category they might fit in, which category they don't fit in, and help them understand, you know, whether or not the alley that they want to close might be something the city could ask for compensation for, or, you know, what to expect after the application moves forward. So that's basically my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions, but it's a very complicated set of legal procedures. And I, I don't, I don't know exactly why there's, there needs to be so many different procedures and public hearing requirements and all of these things. But what I can tell you is that before the 1940s, whether or not the city even acquired title to land, if there was a plat that was recorded in the circuit court, depended on which state law was in effect at the time that plat got recorded. So it might have been, title might have vested in the city at some point. At some point, title might actually have vested in the Commonwealth of Virginia. So it just, there's all these variables that, it's certainly difficult for any citizens to understand because it's also difficult for, for lawyers and, and, and people inside City Hall to understand as well.
So I have, I guess, one question that I have been asked a number of times, both in my capacity on counsel and as my, in my capacity as a private lawyer. And I've never known the answer. Maybe help me out. There are, particularly, I'm, I'm thinking of some places in Belmont, for example, where the, whatever was platted in 1902 or whenever it was, created a system of alleys that seemed fairly obviously to be intended for somebody to be able to access the backyard. And I, I was trying to figure out who actually owns that. And you've indicated that, under some circumstances, the city might own it, even if the, even if there's no deed that says that the city owns it. Am I understanding that?
So what I will say is that, based on the, the number of plats I've looked at over the years, working here for the city, so it's about 20 years altogether now, I have rarely found a deed or a plat that came right out and said, we are creating these alleys within this subdivision, and we intend them to be public alleys. That almost is never the case.
Right.
And so when those alleys were created, a number of results could happen. Sometimes the developer, this, this happens more often with streets than alleys, but it was possible that somebody could have reserved title to those areas to themselves as the developer. Either because they wanted to come along later and perhaps put utilities in those locations, and, and then on the surface, they wanted, they intended them to benefit the adjacent property owners. Sometimes in the development schemes, you will see language in a deed that's, that says that this alley is intended for the benefit of the adjacent property owners. But if you don't have any of that, the rule-
But if you've got that language, does that give the city title?
No, it doesn't. City won't have title. There could be other circumstances that indicate that the city might have an unperfected right of way, kind of in the nature of an easement, if and when it, it ever determined that there was a use it wanted to place there. But that doesn't mean the city has title to it. So if the, if that interest exists, or even if that interest exists, if those landowners come in and want to close that area, the closing of that area by city council will divest city council of, of that sort of unperfected right to claim it in the future. But title, with most alleys in the city, title is with those adjoining landowners to the center line. So if you, you think about title being sort of the base layer on a map, and then the city's unperfected interest is kind of an overlay layer that won't come into effect later. If city council closes that alley as part of vacating a portion of a subdivision plat, the city will give up its right to claim it in the future, if there is such a right. But the title never left those adjoining landowners. We had one really interesting case a few years ago where somebody wanted to develop a particular area and they wanted to close a platted street. But I had, I worked with the lawyers for the developers and come to find out there was a development corporation from the early 1900s that have reserved title to all the streets in that subdivision to itself. So a local law firm actually had to go to circuit court to, to quiet title and to, to get the disposition of that area settled. And before it did that, what we had to tell them is, there was no, that particular situation didn't fit within any of these procedures that we could help them with until they went and got the court to get title away from this development corporation that hasn't existed for, you know, 100 years. So there's all sorts of weird situations that can come up. But most of the time, when there's an alley, the title to the land is with the adjoining property owners to the center line. And if the city has never taken any steps to claim that area for itself, either by putting utilities in it or by improving it some way, then if the city has any interest in it at all, it's, it's unperfected.
There have been times when I've tried to go to the city GIS website, and there are places there where if you click there, nothing happens. Nobody apparently owns that strip. That, in some cases, it's a grid that surrounds all of these places. And I, I was trying to advise a client one time, but I don't know how you go about figuring out. They, they wanted to be able to, to make sure that this alley would continue to be, you know, and, and entry onto a street.
Right. The tax map records are good indications, are reasonably good indications of established boundary lines, but they are terrible indications of ownership. You can't rely on them to determine ownership.
Ms. McGill has been patiently holding up her hand. Counselor McGill?
Yeah, I just, I have a, this does clear up a number of things. Lisa, thank you very much. I do understand this is a very complex issue. I think one thing it shows me that we need to work on is putting up a webpage that at least gives some guidance that constituents can go to, to look at. I guess some, another question I have is, if it is an alley that would go to the center line, if one neighbor says, no, I don't want to close this, I refuse to sign on to this, does it still stay just kind of open?
That's, that's right. So, yes. So even though, even though every- even though the adjoining property owners may own title to the center line, in many of those cases, instead of the city having that, so that title, again, is your base layer, but instead of the city having the right to use the area, it's all of those landowners that, that abut or join that, that have the right to use it. So you might be on the north end of the alley, and you have every right to use that alley to go all the way through and connect over to the, the, the street on the other side of the block. That may be the interest. So if, if eight out of 10 of those owners want to close it, but two out of 10 don't, then we have to figure out whether or not that alley was created by a subdivision plat, if it, that falls within the purview of the plat vacation statute. If it was, then that, those eight persons can force the closure by asking city council to approve a vacation of the subdivision plat in that area. But everybody has to get notice, and then there's a public hearing, and then city council makes the call as to whether it's closed. But if that alley wasn't created by a subdivision plat, if it was create, or a modern subdivision plat, if it was created many years ago and, you know, all of the, the interests in the area are actually described in, in a deed or what have you, it may be that we don't have a procedure at all. And unless everybody can agree among themselves, there, there might not be a way to get city council involved to close it.
What happens if someone's built something like a shed?
Usually, that is fine until somebody who has a right to use the area decides that they want to use the area. So if somebody builds a shed that blocks the whole area, if it's the private landowners that have the right to use it, and somebody moves in and says, hey, I, I checked my chain of title, and this alley is supposed to be for all of us to use, and I want to be able to drive my car from one side of the block to the other using this alley, then those landowners could go to court and file an action themselves to ask the, the building to be removed. If the city has the right to use it, even if the city doesn't have title, if the city has that overlay interest and the right to use it, if the city's ready to go with a sidewalk project or a bike pedestrian project, and the city's ready to claim it, then this, if the city can demonstrate from the deeds and the plats that it has the right to use it, the city could claim it and then force the shed to be removed.
Yeah, I just, I mean, there's been so much of the land use that has just been in families for generations, or, but we are definitely seeing a changing face in Charlottesville where a lot of families, it's just switching over, and people are finding that what they assumed was one thing is actually not what they thought it was.
Right, right.
And that's, it, just if we could, down the road, have something that just kind of even initiates, if you wanted to look into closing these alleys, this is, this is your first step.
And we can look at maybe preparing a decision tree. A long ago, city attorney by the name of Clyde Goldman hand drew a decision tree on a piece of paper, and I still use it. It says, if this, then that. And I can't figure out how to make it into something that looks modern on my computer, so I'm still using his hand-drawn decision tree. But this issue of, particularly the alleys, it comes up not just in connection with people asking to close them. It comes up every day, or very often, people, the city needs to take this tree down. Like, so many people who have an alley at the back of their lot just assume that it's a public alley, when in Charlottesville, if you go back and look at our ordinances that, you know, implement development requirements, we have never required people to create alleys and dedicate them for public use. So almost all these alleys were created to be private alleys. And, and so in, in most of these cases, we have to give the bad news to people that title to that land is with you. The city doesn't have a planned use for it right now, so you're going to have to work out with your other adjacent landowner who's responsible for cleaning it up, remedying the trash problem on it, getting rid of the, the, the tree that fell down, or whatever the, the issue might be. So city staff's not always popular having to deliver that message, but that's, that's usually, not always, but almost always the case.
Yeah, thank you for this. Seenan, did you have anything else? Okay. Yeah, I really appreciate it. I know there's a lot of work went into that. Hope we could get copies of the slides.
Sure. It was just kind of two pages of talking notes, but I'm happy to provide those. And then our office is, is continuing to work with the Office of Community Solutions, not only to, I think what we're going to have to do because of so many issues we're trying to address, including standardizing deed, lease formats, and addressing a number of things, I think we're going to have to come up with a real estate manual for internal use that includes all of these things and helps everybody understand how they can be tied to each other. That's an ongoing project, so I can't say I'm going to have that ready for you next week or next month. But we're going to try to do better. And I think having a website now, we do need to take advantage and create some materials that can serve as a resource for people on the website, including applications, but maybe also including, you know, any decision trees that we use internally.
Yeah, one question. So when might the city have an unperfected right to something? Is that basically, or so, for example, when a property's being developed, if the city says, in the future, we may want an easement through here for a water line, but we don't take it at that point, but we could later? Is that the idea? It's unperfected?
So usually, when the city has an unperfected right, it, it arises from plats that were recorded many years ago. Because under the modern subdivision laws, including the one that is in effect now, if somebody presents a subdivision plat to the city, and they, they lay out the location of public streets, and they lay out areas for utilities, once that subdivision plat is approved by the city subdivision agent and recorded over in the land records, it establishes the property boundaries, and the land within those areas, title to that land immediately passes to the city now just by recording that subdivision plat. But what we don't get when the subdivision plat is recorded is we don't yet have the improvements in those areas. So that's why you occasionally have a resolution in front of you where the engineering is saying, the pavement and the public street has been constructed to city standards, so now it's time for you to adopt this resolution to accept the public, it's, it usually says, accept the public street into the city's system for maintenance. What that's talking about is the improvements on the public street. You already have title to the land. But years ago, before these modern subdivision laws, when you recorded a plat in the land records, even if it was for a street, title may not have- even if it was for a street, title may not have passed to the city. And so unless and until you actually constructed that street, you didn't get title to it. So you had an unperfected right to use it if it was clear from that recorded plat that it was being created to be a public street in the future. But until you actually either formally accepted the dedication of that area by action of council, or you actually went in and constructed the improvements, you didn't get title to the land until, until you did one of those two things.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that, that when I did this for the county, it was a little bit different because it was state right-of-way that, that we just need a consistent message and protocol that people know that if they ask someone, whoever they ask, they would get the same message type of thing. If we write something up, then I think a lot of this would be avoided. And for the county, for many years, it was me because I was only transportation planner. So, and here, I know we may have different people. I just think people just want to know that they don't want to, they just want to get a consistent message. So this information was good. And it is, it was very informative for me to find that we have to assume that it is a private driveway, I mean alley type of thing.
Alley, most of the time, yeah. There are some places where it's been different. In some larger cities for, you know, hundreds of years, they've had trash pickups or, you know, some sort of fire services or something where they've had a robust system of public alleys, but that's not been Charlottesville over the years.
Does it, I'll just be quick, but when it comes to the, I guess to me, the biggest question is like the alleys. Because to me, the relevant policy issue is not cutting off bike or pedestrian access somewhere. And it seems like alleys are that way. I don't remember encountering utility easements that seem to have a lot of complications and problems. And streets, maybe one or two, but rarer. So when it comes to the alleys, I guess it sounds like if we were always following that 2019 process, that still wouldn't be sufficient to deal with all the complicating factors around that? Or, and if that's the case, should we expect that we need to make an ordinance change at some point? Or should it be contemplated as part of the zoning rewrite? Or is this really more about the internal process within the city rather than needing any kind of additional ordinance to clarify or strengthen it?
I, I think it's more about the city's internal processes because the, the applications that give us the most trouble are the ones where we can't find any current public interest. We can't find one of these previous dedications for public use that just hasn't been perfected. And so to tell landowners that you don't want to approve a vacation of that alley because the city might want to use it 50 years from now is a difficult thing to navigate. But I think one of the ways to address that is to make sure that as you, you've got to have a robust pedestrian and bicycle master plan, which we do. But when you prepare those maps, if you need to make connections, you need to start showing those connections on the maps and on your comprehensive plan maps that talk about connectivity and projects. And the closer you can get to an actual need to use that or desire to use that, even if you're not ready to go right at the moment, you can still say to somebody, "Look, it's in our master plan. We want to make this connection. We don't think it's a good idea to close this and we'll be in touch with you," you know. Not 50 years ago, but maybe in the next five years to talk about how can we acquire an interest, an easement, whatever it might be, in this area so we can make that connection. So it's, it's about how do you explain to someone why you're saying no in cases where you don't currently have an interest in the property, but you think you might want to use it way, way down the road in the future.
Yeah, and to me, to me, that's the piece of it that I, seems the most important is just that pedestrian access. And I guess if that's what it takes, then we'll get there eventually.
But it is, it was great that the work of the committee that was formed, I think back in 2018, they identified a lot of these locations. And so their work is available now to inform the people who update these plans periodically. And when you're looking for opportunities to do new projects, you should look at whether there are existing alleys there that you could acquire as, as part of the right-of-way or the project acquisition areas for that, that particular connection.
I think I mostly understand, but thank you.
I guess the question that occurs to me is, let's assume, again, using the example of the Belmont area where basically most of those blocks have an alley that's in between the two platted developed streets. And there's at some point an alley that runs, well, I'll say north-south. And there's also the alley that runs east-west that should be going into the backyards or allowing access to the backyards of, of the parcels on either side. Supposing the city, are you saying that that, that those kinds of alleys are actually already owned by the neighbors?
The title to the land is, is already with the owners unless we can find some different result in a deed that was recorded with that master sort of subdivision for the belt. We have a, in our office, we have a great big version of that Belmont, the original plat for Belmont.
Well, usually there's a, there's a plat that was recorded in 1902 or whenever it was.
Right. And sometimes there's notes on the plat.
And it'll show, it will show those reserved spaces, which we'll call alleys for now. Even though the plat says, "When you buy the property next there, you're getting, say, 50 feet this way and 100 feet that way." You're not getting 55 feet. You're not getting 50 feet plus half of the alley.
No, that's the, that's the weird thing because the plat established a boundary line that is the edge of their lot. So clearly, the alley was intended to be an area that had a different boundary line than your lot. But it's because that, that group of people has the right to use it. So, for example, that's why in the assessor's office, they, they don't separately, the plats don't separately say, "Title to these areas is with the adjacent landowners." That is really just something that you find out under the, the laws that say, "What happens when you close that area?" It says, "Title, you know, reverts to the adjacent landowners." So the, the theory is that at some point, there was a developer who owned the whole thing, no boundary lines on the inside. And then as that developer platted it, he created those lots and the lots were eventually sold to people. But that area, you didn't really need to deal with title. So there, there's not a title document that the assessor can use to say, "Half of this is, should be taxed to this person, half taxed to the other." You don't really get to that issue until somebody tries to close it. But the purpose of plating it is to make it clear that it's an area that some group of people have the right to use as a right-of-way, whether privately or publicly. That area is subject to other rights, even though, you know, that base layer of legal title may, may be with adjacent landowners.
And I guess what I was getting at is that supposing the city were to decide that it was in the public interest to preserve those alleys and to use those alleys for the original purpose for which they were intended, and that we felt strongly enough about it so that at the very least, we would say, "We're never going to close those alleys. Forget about it." I mean, at some point, somebody would say, "If it's truly a permanent decision like that, then hasn't that affected my title in some way?" Number one. Number two, could the city say, "We're going to go ahead and take title to all those things and none of you all actually have title to it. You've got this, this, some inchoate right that, but, but it's not clear and we're going to make it so that these are, you know, for the common good, accesses to people's backyards so that, for example, if we're getting into a situation where we're not going to allow on-street parking, with it, we, we know that people will be able to park in their backyards as they must have done 100 years ago."
I think.
Can we do that?
There's various ways you can do that, yeah. And I think that it's possible, there may be some discussions about that in certain areas of the city with the new zoning ordinance. Because it's my understanding that now alleys are, it's coming back in vogue to look at alleys as a way of accessing property that may or may not involve a full-blown city street. So when you have a certain area, maybe somebody wants to, quote, replat it or somebody is redeveloping it and it already has that alley established. That might be one thing you take into account. If the city doesn't currently have any interest in it, the city doesn't actually need title to the land. The city would just need something in the nature of an easement or right-of-way to use it if they wanted it for a public purpose. So you don't even need underlying title. You just need, you know, a portion of that bundle of ownership sticks in the nature of an easement or a right-of-way.
Now you're going back to law school.
To be able to use it. Yep, yep. So there's different ways that you can do it. But yes, it's, there are, there can be really good reasons to keep them and to say no when people want to vacate them, so.
I need someone to explain to me at a later point, the metaphor of the bundle of sticks. That seems like an interesting legal.
Yeah.
The 22nd version is that they tell us in law school that the right of ownership consists of a bundle of sticks. And one is the right of possession of the property and one is the right to sell the property and one is the right to use the property. So these are all sticks. And you can sell one or give away one of those sticks or two of those sticks and retain one. Anyway, that's the idea.
Interesting.
Counselor McGill, you had your hand up a minute ago. And then are you still wanting to join the conversation further?
It was something, but then I lost it and I forgot to take note about it.
Okay. Well, this is, this is fascinating. And the only question I have is, do I get CLE credit for this?
Maybe. I've also got a whole little notebook of materials that you're welcome to come by and read sometime. All sorts of articles about, particularly pertaining to how cities figure out what's theirs versus somebody else's and which process do you use to, to close it. There are a couple of people who have some amount of fame under the, with the real estate section of the bar. One is a former town attorney in Herndon and the other is a gentleman by the name of Douglas Dear, who I think was a surveyor or a, or he owned a title company. But he's written a series of articles about all of this that are basically sort of Bible that I'd have to look at every time these come through.
Who maintains the properties that are these alleys that people are using to get to their, back of their houses via, that are like gravelled or paved, that technically aren't the city's maintenance?
The adjoining landowners. So if everybody maintains their, their little area that adjoins their lot, then the whole thing will work. If somebody's not doing that, then either everybody has to get together and, and make an agreement collectively to do that or somebody, if it gets bad enough that, that people want to use it, it's clear they have the right to use it, but there's a big hole next to somebody's property that they won't fix, then they might have to bring a private action in court to deal with that.
Okay, that's, because I know there's a lot of these alleys that are part gravel, part concrete, part asphalt, part dirt.
Yep.
And thank you.
Yep.
Not every council meeting, you get to use Wikipedia and learn a whole new concept.
Okay. Any other questions? We're getting, sneaking up on 5:30, so.
Thank you for this.
Thank you very much.
Stay tuned.
That's right. Okay. That raises a whole bunch of other questions that I guess we're going to have to sort out later on. That concludes our four o'clock agenda. Is there a motion to now go into closed session?
Got it up. Pursuant to Section 2 dot 2 dash 3712 of the Virginia Code, I hereby move that the city council close this open meeting and convene within a closed meeting as authorized by Virginia Code, Section 2 dot 2 slash 3711 A7 and A8 for consideration with legal counsel pertaining to various litigation matters currently pending in federal court, Western District of Virginia and the Charlottesville Circuit Court, where briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the litigating posture of the city and for consultation with legal counsel regarding the human rights ordinance, the PCOB operating procedures, a pending special use permit application, 113 Fifth Street Southwest, and for advice on the FOIA compliance regarding joint closed meetings with other public bodies.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes. Council is now in closed session. We will return to a different Zoom link for the open meeting and we'll see you all at 6:30. Thank you.